Welcome to the regular scheduled public meeting of the zoning board of appeals of Shreveport Cattle Parish Metropolitan Planning Commission. For public hearing agenda items, if you wish to make public comments on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand next to the podium. For future notification purposes, it is very important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you come forward to speak. When you come forward to speak, please state your full name, mailing address, and zip code before addressing the board. We will call each case on the agenda in order, and first hear from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes for each additional speaker. We will then hear from those wishing to speak against an application. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, and three minutes for each additional speaker. One representative from the application can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case on our agenda. Please note that when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public may request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office at 318-673-6480 after 1:00 p.m. tomorrow, or by accessing our website at shreveportcattlempc.com. All ZBAA board decisions on cases within the city limits of Shreveport are subject to appeal to district court. All ZBAA decisions on parish cases are subject to appeal to the parish commission. Please note that it is your responsibility to contact either district court or the parish administrator's office about their procedures as related to the matter you are concerned with. Copies of this document and the phone numbers to contact the governing bodies are available on the table next to the podium and in the entryway to this room. As a courtesy, please remember to turn off all cell phones while the ZBAA is in session. This honor board of appeals values your testimony and appreciates your compliance with these guidelines. All right. Is there anyone here who has a chance to go over the minutes of the last meeting? Okay, what do I hear this is?
It's been moved by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Berry. Let us vote.
Did it care?
Yeah, it cared.
Okay, motion cares. All right, first case on the agenda today is case number 19-306-BAP, River City Communication.
How you doing? Keith Sutton, 417 Clover Lane, Bozeman City, Louisiana. I'm coming today to ask for a variance on a lot size for a property at 114 Dixie Meadow Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. And it's...
Okay.
I don't really have anything to say. I was just told I had to get a variance on this lot size, to be honest with you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-306-BAP? Okay, you can have a seat, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone speaking against case number 19-306-BAP? Um, do I hear a motion?
The approval.
Second.
The move by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Farrell. Let us cast our votes. And motion cares. Next case, case number 19-317-BAP, Blanchard Walker O'Quinn and Roberts.
William Bradford, 333 Texas Street, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. On behalf of QuickTrip, our client, I do need a few seconds to set up a PowerPoint presentation. Do we get it on both screens or just this one? Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time, as well as the staff. I appreciate, this is our third iteration of this, and I know there were some members who may not have been present in the first presentation. Of course, we do have a new member to the board, and congratulations on your appointment. Would like to give a reiteration of our first presentation with some additional information that may be beneficial to this board. This matter surrounds a sign variance request on behalf of QuickTrip. QuickTrip is a multi-state, large corporation that specializes in travel centers as well as convenience stores and truck stops. QuickTrip is intending to locate in the city of Shreveport along I-20 and the Westburg Coons exit to rehabilitate a currently dilapidated structure into a nice, beautiful convenience store that you see here and truck center. We have expressed our interest in not only building this facility, but also having a large economic footprint in the city of Shreveport. And one of the considerations that we're asking this board make is a sign variance for our advertising sign, our fuel advertising sign. You know, as the current UDC stands, we have to qualify this as a billboard, but I don't want you to be misguided in the sense that this is not your traditional billboard. This is the fuel sign that advertises the current prices. And right now, there are three or four large 100-foot signs along I-20 in this general vicinity that our, my client would be competing with. And we'll get further into the presentation on that, but I do want you to make that consideration that we are not talking about, you know, your traditional lawyer advertising billboards. We are talking about the only opportunity for my client to advertise to the general public their current fuel costs. So, just a little bit about QuickTrip. QuickTrip has spent 16 years on the Fortune list of top 100 companies to work for in America. So this is a larger conversation than just about this 20-foot variance or 100, or 40-foot variance that we're asking for. This is about bringing economic development to our area, to our communities. Perennially listed on Forbes Top 100 Privately Held Companies, and it's been named among the 100 Best Workplaces for Women by Fortune Magazine. They have never laid off an employee in the history of the company, and the average store manager owns $85,000 a year. We're talking about real jobs, real economic opportunity, and real employment, meaningful employment in our community. The average entry-level assistant manager's starting pay is $45,000 per year. So this is gross, this is great economic impact, these are great jobs, and this is a great company to work for. And also, they're conscious neighborhood and community partners. QuickTrip contributes 5% of its profits to charitable organizations and the communities in which it operates. So there is a net benefit for this corporation locating and operating in our community. QuickTrip is a national safe place location for endangered youth, which we'll discuss in a little bit, in more detail. What is a safe place? Safe place, QuickTrip recognizes the economic impact that they have on a community, but also the social impact they need to have on these communities. And one of the things that I want this board to consider when it's discussing this variance is that this allows this company to operate in our community, to provide meaningful economic impact to our community, and provide areas like safe places for at-risk youth to land if they have troubled times. And with our partners, our community partners, we can operate these safe places with our agency partners and volunteers in order to provide a location for at-risk youth to, like I said before, land in the instance that they have a, you know, a dire need or stress situation. QuickTrip is also a meaningful partner in the military community. We provide a, we're proud to support the military families, and this is going to be major for Barksdale area and for those people who locate here as military families. They partner with the Foles of Honor to provide scholarships to military families in the cities where we operate stores, commissaries, and distribution warehouses. I'm bringing these issues up because, you know, we're asking for a variance. We're asking you to deviate from what the ordinary UDC provides for. And the reason why you can consider these variances, not just because of the stipulations set forth in the code, but also as a board, you have the policy obligation to create policy that is meaningful and is mindful of the economic impact that these companies have on our community. So, QuickTrip is not only just a convenience center that locates here or a travel center, but they're also a meaningful community partner. And I think that that has fair weight and value in your deliberations on whether or not to grant this variance. Now, I want to talk to you about the existing structure. This is the existing structure as it stands right now. This is a currently dilapidated building that has been offline for several years. QuickTrip intends to take and renovate this facility, expand the footprint, allow for a much more robust facility in that area, and to bring some meaningful economic development in that area. We're talking about a multi-state corporation that is locating in the city of Shreveport. You know, this is an opportunity for us to not only increase and lift that area economically, but also to provide a competitive advantage for, or to provide a competitive need for our competitors, to improve their facilities, right? So once you lift, begin to lift up an area, it creates competition within that area, which also improves the quality of life in that area. Right now, if you see, there are several billboards that are located around our facility. This is just one area. This is more of how the existing structure is situated right now. And this sign, which is a 100-foot sign on the property, is an on-premise sign. It is our intention to remove this dilapidated sign because, one, as I stated before, the location of our property is about a tenth of a mile from I-20. We realize, and our experts at QuickTrip have realized, that there's no meaningful use for this sign. So, what is currently eye clutter and visual pollution along the Westburg Coons corridor will be removed in anticipation of placing a meaningful sign along the I-20 corridor. So here are some of the existing conditions. You can see that this area needs economic lift. That is the sign that currently exists that would be removed in anticipation, along with other signs along the I-20 corridor in compliance with the UDC. So, so not only are you going, or not only are we going to remove two signs along the I-20 corridor, which will be discussed further shortly, but you will also have this dilapidated and quite frankly, eyesore of a sign removed from the Westburg Coons corridor. And, you know, QuickTrip doesn't do anything with a half step. They build many facilities, they're brick and mortar, they're very nice, they're very well placed, they are, they are, they create economic lift within the areas, and just by nature of its name alone, QuickTrip is such a high-profile name to have in that area that, again, it creates meaningful lift, not just at the property location itself, but also at the properties around it. Here's an example of the canopy structure that would be on-premise, as well as the diesel canopy structure, because we not only cater to autos, we also cater to diesel. Now, the crux of this argument, the proposed billboard location is along I-20, it's circled in red there. In addition to the removal of the premises sign in accordance with the UDC and in our negotiations with Lamar, we will remove two signs along the I-20 corridor. So we're not only removing the on-premise eyesore sign, we're also removing those two signs along the I-20 corridor in compliance with the UDC. We'll also look at removing other billboards currently on the property, but we want to focus on the two that are along the I-20 corridor right now. The proposed billboard, and as I explained earlier, is not, it has to be qualified as a billboard under the UDC, but it really, its purpose is to advertise the fuel prices for our location. Again, I reemphasize the fact that you've got a Pilot and a Petro that are along within a quarter of a mile, if not a tenth of a mile, within our surrounding areas that are much larger than the proposed sign that we're asking for here. Those signs provide, this sign would provide, well, let me back up. The current billboards are obstructed by foliage. If you take a ride out there, and which I'll show you some photos shortly, right now, the current billboard that we are replacing is obstructed by foliage. And according to our recent survey, the billboard location, the actual location that we are proposing this variance, sits below the roadway grade. The tractor-trailer braking requires a longer distance. Again, we don't only cater to automobiles, we're also catering to heavy truck traffic. Eighty to 100 foot provides sufficient visibility, that is from QuickTrip's experts, they say eighty to 100 feet provides sufficient visibility to adequately advertise our fuel prices and remain competitive to nearby fuel stop locations. And unlike the nearby truck wash, the QuickTrip billboard is the only beacon for interstate traffic. Again, our facility is about a tenth of a mile from the exit ramp. So you don't get the, we don't get the benefit, by nature of our property location, of that kind of roadside advertising that you get from your bright seafoam green building. So we are, we are at an economic disadvantage and a competitive disadvantage as it stands from the site location itself. That's why it's so important for us to have that off-premise, we'll call it billboard, sign located along the I-20 corridor. And we want that sign to be congruent to the competitive signs that are further along for Petro, for the travel agents, for the travel center, and for Pilot fuel stations. So let's talk about the law. And I know Mr. Berry brought this up in the last conversation, but we want to talk about actually what allows for a variance zoning. Section 16.4 of the Unified Development Code addresses unnecessary hardships or practical difficulties. And so these are the three approval standards that you can rely on when approving a variance. Again, we recognize that we're asking you to deviate from the UDC. The staff report outlines to you what the UDC provides for. You, as a policymaking board, have the prerogative to vary, that's why you have a variance procedure, from that standard UDC requirement, and allow for variances to those requirements and restrictions. So the approval standards are, the strict application of the code will result in undue hardship unless the specific relief requested is granted, the plight is due to unique circumstances inherent to the subject property, and the variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. So I want to talk about each of these more specifically, undue hardship. The strict application of the code places QuickTrip at a disadvantage to its nearest competitors and creates undue hardship. These are visualizations of greater than 60-foot signs that are within one-tenth of a mile of our current location. This is, you'll see the travel center is a greater than 60-foot sign at a nearby travel center, and you'll see one for the Petro station. These are an eyeshot of our property. The subject property has limitations. The property is one-tenth of a mile from the interstate. The billboard provides competitive marketing, however, the view from Westburg Coons and along I-20 at 60-foot is obstructed by foliage. Yes, sir.
Your time is up, sir.
That's 10 minutes? Oh, I apologize. Can I, can I request an extension? I did not realize that we were butting up against the 10-minute mark.
Okay, we are allowed a rebuttal if there's someone here to do a, stay there against it.
Okay. All right.
All right, is there anyone else here speaking for case number 19-317-BAC? Is there anyone speaking against case number 19-317-BAC?
I have a few questions that I might ask Mr. Bradford, does sir, if you would allow, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
We've listened to your presentation in reference to the true need for the variance. I think that that was a problem with the Federal Highway Administration, Louisiana DOTD and the heights, that they would allow sign to be erected.
There is a procedure, again, I mean, quite frankly, we'll have to do the same process at the state level to try and obtain permission to erect the sign above that, essentially obtain a variance. We're asking this board to allow us that opportunity to move this process forward, and allow them at the state level to make that determination, and seek the opportunity to remain competitive in this space. And so, I do recognize that that is an issue that we have to overcome, but, again, this body has prerogative to grant that variance and allow us to move this ball forward.
So, in order for you to even contact the Louisiana Department of Transportation Development, that would have to be a variance from this board to allow sign up to any certain height?
No, sir. We've begun that process. I mean, I believe in pure transparency, and so we're working through this now. I think that it, you know, it's a chicken and egg situation for my client, is if we cannot get a variance at the local level, then it is meaningless for us to move forward with an attempt to get one at the state level. And so, the importance of this, and we have, and I apologize, not recognizing the amount of time I had remaining, we actually have video that I think is very important to this discussion that shows when you have a below-grade sign level, that there's an exponential impact that those trucks, that those trucks see when they're traveling both westbound and eastbound. You cannot see that sign because of the foliage and because of their, there's an overpass there at Westburg Coons that precludes you from seeing a sign at 60-foot until you are underneath that overpass if you are headed eastbound. And so, again, I apologize, I did not get to that video in my presentation, but it's very demonstrative of the issue that arises when we are limited in this situation. But again, we are allowed a variance process at the state level, and are allowed to seek redress from that body as well.
What about the federal level?
At the federal level, there is a conversation that will have to happen with the Federal Transportation Highway Administration. So, you know, we will go through that process as well. The DOTD and the FTHA work very closely together in monitoring that. We do anticipate that there will be a variance process for both of those segments, inclusive of and as relied on with the DOTD in Baton Rouge.
Can the current sign that you're planning on removing, can that be updated to accommodate this one?
So, the current sign is a very low sign. It sits in, actually below the tree line. And so, under the UDC, in order for us to construct or erect a sign that is meaningful for my client, we will have to tear that sign down, and as well, because there's a thousand-foot requirement, tear down a sign further east along the interstate in order for us to construct that sign that actually would be, provide some visibility to us. And again, I keep reemphasizing that at 60 feet, we are still in the tree line. We are not, it's not visible to anyone along Westburg Coons or that would be headed eastbound on I-20. It is, there's late visibility if you're headed westbound, and quite frankly, and again, I apologize for not making this portion of my presentation, but there's clear video that you will miss your exit by the time you're able to see. The truck wash sign sits at 60 feet. So you can see, and that aerial that I provided at the very end of my presentation was a drone that was set at 60 feet. So, not only can you not see our sign at 60 feet from Westburg Coons, you can't see it if you're traveling eastbound, and you will miss your exit if you're headed westbound on it.
How long was that portion of your presentation?
Videos are probably 30 seconds.
You'd have to go out of order. You'd have to go out of order, too. Allow him additional time. Okay.
I make a motion, we go out of order and allow Mr. Bradford to show his video.
Second. The move by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss. You can go ahead and show your video, sir. Thank you. I'll get to those now. Okay, this is traveling westbound.
We've got to vote.
Say again?
I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion cares.
Okay.
This is traveling westbound, and I want you to pay attention, this QuickTrip, excuse me, the, hang on, it didn't populate there. The quick wash, the wash, the tree wash sign is a good indicator of where 60 feet is. And I want you to keep an eye on the left, you know, the opposite lane of travel. This is traveling westbound. You can see the tree line. And it's just there that you see the truck wash sign, okay? And again, our property sits behind that truck wash building. All right, you've missed your exit. Now, eastbound is a little more demonstrative. So you're, this is at the industrial loop exit. Again, we're going to pass that 100-foot Petro sign. You're going to see the exit sign above, you know, right there in your frame of view. You see the truck wash building, you would see, now, tell me when you see that truck Again, it's obstructed by that Westburg Coons exit, and there is, that's at 60 feet. I think that provides a meaningful demonstration of how difficult and what a disadvantage 60-foot places us with, again, with 100-foot signs for our direct competitors, and then the actual situation of the property that's by no fault of our own, as this variance requirement allows.
One last question, Mr. Chairman. We try extremely hard. We really want that site to be developed, and we've all, we've noticed that demolition has already begun on the site, so that's an immediate improvement to the site, getting that building down that's been there. If the board would be inclined to consider 80 feet as a 20-foot variance, would that work for Quick, for your company?
Yes, sir. I think, you know, as previously stated, that that is a fair compromise, and that places our engineers and experts at a level of comfort where we're not just focused only on this site, this allows us to look at other sites within the area as well.
So 80 feet is amicable, too?
Yes, sir. The request is for 100, we would be very pleased with 80.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead, motion with you. Stipulations.
I make the motion that we allow 80 feet for this particular location of the sign.
A second motion.
Point of order, do you include the approval of the maximum sign area of 612 feet to ensure consistency and compatibility with the nearby surrounding areas? There are two parts to this.
Two parts, yeah. Yes. Restate your motion again for me.
I'd like to make the motion that we accept the 80 feet for this particular location, also with the, where's that part?
Approval of it.
The approval of the...
612.
612 square feet. Yeah, 612 square feet.
Okay.
A second.
This move by Mr. Moss, second by Ms. Dunn. Let us vote. And the motion carries.
Hello. Thank you. Carol Cotton, 605 Paramount Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. We were here in October, and we tabled the matter until today. I am Carol Cotton, and I am the mother of the owner, this is Ben Cotton, you'll hear from him in just a moment, and I'm also the designer of this remodel for his house. So I decided to apply, make the application myself, because his job keeps him traveling a lot with his fire department and military obligations, but he's able to be here today, so you will hear from him. When the first staff recommendation came out, it was based on an incomplete file, because I was working with Ms. Manis Vini, the other planner, and she's no longer an employee of the MPC, so Mr. Plant got the file from her. And it did not include the fact that we had applied for a permit for, to enclose the carport, which we have begun, and it did not show the sketches I'd shown her how we were doing that, enclosing the carport to expand it, and then building a new carport in front. So the staff member who inherited the file had the information wrong and didn't show that we needed a really new structure. So, on Friday afternoon, I got his report, and he's recommending a denial, so I'm here in support of approval, of course, and I want to tell you why. The staff member says that we have failed to demonstrate a hardship, but I'm going to tell you the hardships. And he says that the hardship that we have is self-imposed because we enclosed the carport so that we shouldn't build another carport, because we created our own problem having the carport. And I reject that. Here's the reason. Lots of people enclose their carports, and especially in this little bitty neighborhood, Shreve Island, it's a small house, that's one of the hardships, it is a small house. It's a mid-century modern house with no attic, no, hardly any closets. And I was over there at Ben's house, and I said, man, he's got a baby on the way, I don't know how he's going to stay in this little house. So we were trying to re-figure the inside, maybe make it an open concept, maybe doing something different to make it more livable for him and his growing family, because he really likes that neighborhood. And it just was hard to do, because the mechanics, the mechanical systems in the house are all right in the very middle, like, because it can't be in the attic, it's not on the roof, and it was, I just said, man, I'm just having the hardest time figuring out how to make your space more livable. The obvious thing is to take in the carport. That's the only way you're going to be able to stay here with your growing family, because there is just no way to make it really work very well, and that's a common thing to do. So we went and got our permit, and then we learned later that the new carport would have to be a separate consideration. I wasn't aware of the new law from, what, about five years ago, that to get a carport in the front has to be a special variance. So I showed the concepts and all of that to the first planner, and so I was a little surprised when I got here on October and I couldn't, we couldn't discuss the actual plan. So now that I know that the staff's position is that it's a self-imposed hardship, I would like to say, it's not self-imposed that the house is too small for a growing family, that their mechanical equipment is all inside, it has no attic, no place to expand to, except the logical way is the carport. And the MPC staff has not told me in any way that the carport that is designed in front of you is in violation as to setback or to size. As a matter of fact, in their report, they're complementary of the design. In the staff report, it says, "The carport design, it complements the mid-century modern architecture style of the existing dwelling. Proposed carpet will extend from the house and appear as an architectural feature of the building." And in addition, the... And in addition, the carpet will be open and supported by individual metal beams, and it will not induce any visual obstruction in the line of sight from the right-of-way. Not only are we setback from the right-of-way properly, but also, on his side of the block, it's set way back to go to the street. This is a very deep right-of-way. It's, I don't know if you're familiar with that block on Captain Shreve, but that carpet will be way far from the street, and all of the neighbors, you'll hear from Ben in a minute, but all the neighbors are in support of it. There's not been one negative comment. It's going to be the kind of, of design, and it's not going to be a cheap carport that is splashed, slapped up there. He's spending extra money to make it complement the mid-century lines, to have special siding, high-end lights, and it's going, and nice landscaping, it'll all be completed, be very lovely, and it will inspire the neighborhood, and they're all really excited about it. So let me continue with the other hardships. The hardships that we're outgrowing the house, it's not big enough, there's no attic, there's no way to expand except to go to the carport, and we're landlocked, there's no way, there's nine feet on one side, eleven feet on the other side. And I tried to find other variances that the MPC might have, might have made. Now, a lot of neighbors have built carports in front, and we, and we've seen some, but I don't know if they've been granted a variance or not. And I couldn't find on the website how to really discover the others who might have been granted a variance, but nonetheless, I'm here to talk about our variance. This is the kind, this is a neighborhood that is the older style. We want these young professionals to come in there and be innovative and keep, have a place to grow their families and not have Ben move out. I'm kind of selfish, I'm here because I want my son to stay here. I want him to stay, I want him and my grandkids to be really close to me. I don't want them to move to the outskirts or for some other fire department to steal him away because he's not happy with his living situation. He wants to be at that house, but he's got to have room for a growing family. Other young professionals are the same way. So I think it would, I mean, we encourage, we need to encourage these people, this is the kind of guy and kind of families that you want taking up those old houses, and being creative, innovative, and make, and the neighbors will love it. It improves their, the aesthetics is going to be nice, it's going to improve their quality of life, it's going to improve your, your value of your home, as well as the neighbors, they say it's going to increase their property values. So that's pretty much all I had to say, except I know that you are here to, because there are rules, and so the staff wrote it according to rules. But there's also, y'all are here because you make variances to rules, because you take the totality of everything together to consider, the totality of, of those neighborhoods, that mid-century modern style, how it's just the only place to expand and keep these young professionals in these neighborhoods and not move out of Shreveport, is to give them the ability to be innovative with their spaces, be happy in their homes, be secure, and not leave their, their homes. So I thank you so much for considering this variance, and I'd like Ben to say a few words. Ben, of course, I've got the mommy brag, so everybody can talk on that, but this, this child is an Iraq decorated, highly decorated Iraq war vet and a firefighter, and he's the kind of, these are the kind of people you want. Yes, sir?
Yeah, before you relinquish the microphone, I do have a question. So looking at, I have two, two things. One, what are the two structures behind the carport, the current carport?
Those were existing when he bought it, and they're just little, they're workshops, they were pre-existing.
One of them is a...
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I have to get an answer from her, then you can speak.
Okay. Sure.
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I'm just curious what those structures are.
Those were pre-existing when he bought it, they're like little workshops, and one of them's just a, a roof over, over a...
Dog kennel.
A dog kennel. So it, the roof, it's got a roof on it, but it's just a dog kennel and, to the workshops.
Secondly, I'm looking at the overview, and I only see one of, on Captain Shreve Drive, between East Preston and the other end of Captain Shreve, which I guess is Dixie Garden. I only see one other new-ish additional carport, and it is, does not extend past the front of that particular home. So I think that's...
Show them that.
I've got, I've got photos if you want.
Okay, again, one person and a microphone.
Yes, sir. Now, there, in the fifteen-hundred block which you're talking about, it does extend past the front of the home. It comes out, it's within...
I don't know what fifteen-hundred is, I'm looking at, I don't know, I don't know what the fifteen-hundred block is, but I just, on this map, I don't see any, you know, addition carport, carports that, that will come out to the street as far as the one you're proposing, which I think is part of the, the area.
Oh, as a matter of fact, there is, and, and ours is setback even more, but there's this, you can tell that it's been, you can tell that it's within that twenty feet of the, of the right-of-way. Their right-of-way is really close to the street, our right-of-way is very deep.
Okay.
So ours looks more roomy, but it's on the fifteen-hundred block, and it's a new carport, and it does extend past the front of the house.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, your time is up, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else speaking for case number one-nine dash three-one-eight dash BAC?
That'd be you, go ahead, you can dig it.
Yes, sir. Benjamin Cotton, seventeen oh nine, Captain Shreve Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven eleven oh five. Has, uh, pretty much, as my mother covered, all the technical details, you have to forgive me, I'm not much of a public speaker. The, uh, we, uh, me and my wife have been rooted in that neighborhood for about six years now. We've grown a lot of relationships with all the neighbors, we didn't really want to leave. We started coming up with plans to possibly have to move to a different house to accommodate our, our kids, we're wanting to do three. We just had our first one, and, uh, we're on a roll, so we're not really wanting to slow down. So, uh, we, uh, we needed the room, uh, this was my mother trying to help. All throughout the planning, we thought that this was going to be a little bit more of a sure thing, but here we are. We, uh, tried to get some people in the neighborhood to show up in support of this for today, uh, but most of them are at work, you know, it's, uh, it's, you know, one PM on a Wednesday. We asked about ten people, no one had any issues with it. I mean, we also, we've had this zoning sign in front of our house for a while too, so they know that they could show up, you know, against it if they want to or write letters against it. Out of the people that we asked, four of them wrote letters on their behalf, if you would like them, as, as opposed to them actually being here.
If you would pass it over to...
Absolutely.
Over there.
The, the letter should show that the, the neighborhood is in support of it. As our next-door neighbor said, you know, she wants, she wants our house to look better, so her house will look better. And, uh, and we're trying to update the entire neighborhood, there's been lots of remodels go on throughout the neighborhood already. We're trying to be one of those people, the house is outdated, it needs paint, it needs some other things, and all that doesn't need a variance to do, but while we're already in construction, trying to, uh, trying to make the house more livable for us, we're going to update it to a little bit more of a modern look, and it, it fits all the same lines too. Should bring up that.
I have a question through staff while we're passing this letter around. Cotton indicated that she didn't have a clear understanding of the setback and whether or not this nineteen-foot extension would encroach on the setback. Do we have that information?
From my understanding, it did not encroach on the setback, but it was in the front yard.
Right, okay.
Right.
That was, that was my understanding. I will confirm that for you.
Uh, yes, sir, it was, uh, it, I know that the, uh, the zoning regulations are that you can't build a carport out into the front yard, as we're understanding, but we don't have anywhere else to, uh, to, to put it. We couldn't build onto the rear of the house, as you've had the overview, it doesn't have any room to do that, and, uh, we couldn't put a carport on the side of the house or the rear of the house, which is where the zoning regulations are. So there's really only one way to go, and that's forward.
Say the first part of that again, you couldn't do what?
We couldn't, uh, if we wanted to build in addition, increase the square footage of the house, we couldn't build it into the, into the rear of the yard.
So that, so talk about that, why, why is that not a possibility?
Well, just because it, I mean, it would...
The way it's designed.
The way it's designed, the way the yard is, it would cut off access to the rear of the yard with the, with one of the structures that was there. Financially, it'd be...
You had to keep the structures? They're, they're portable buildings, yes?
Uh, one of them's a portable building, one of them's not. One of them is a, uh, it's, it's an actual, it has like a slab poured on it, it's got a frame and a foundation and everything else, it's insulated, it's a nice shop. The other one, the, the portable building's just a lawnmower shed, it's in the back, but that's not, we weren't even, that one's nowhere near where we were going to build, if anything, so.
So that's the one, that's the one further to the rear?
Yes, sir.
The one that's portable?
Yes, sir, the metal one. The other one's not, it's a, it's actually, is a, built as part of the house. The guy that owned the house before me, he was a Cato sheriff deputy, and he was a, a K-9 supervisor, that was his dog kennel, and he also had a woodworking shop built adjacent, like, under the same roof of it. And it's an actual decked and shingled roof.
Can we pull them up, um, the aerial view of the house? So what you're saying is the, the home with, oh, this is your home right here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, the first, to the right-hand side there, the brown top, you're saying that is a permanent structure there?
Yes, sir, that's a permanent structure.
And there's no way that you could build from your existing carport back instead of going forward?
Well, well, two things, we've already started the work on the carport, and two, that would have, uh, it wouldn't have allowed to relocate any doors, we would have had to bust it out, brick and tear down walls. I mean, the, the way that we had it right now required a lot more economical, uh, wouldn't have, it wouldn't have cost a hundred thousand dollars to build it. I know that isn't y'all's problem, but, uh, it wouldn't have, it wouldn't have worked out, um, in my opinion. It wouldn't have, it wouldn't have worked with the, with the design of the house. The, would have made the whole house really awkward and hard to live in.
But in July, we got that permit.
Right. So we had the permit to start construction on the house in July, and we had already started on it, and then we learned about the, the carport and the variance from this, because the both of, I mean, we, she's remodeled lots of houses before, that's why I trusted her to take over this project, and the, the carport in the front of the house was a newer addition to the zoning regulation that neither one of us were aware of. I wouldn't know about any of them anyway, but she didn't know about it either. But also, the construction's already started, the slab's been poured, the framing's up, the walls are up, every, the only thing missing is somewhere to park the cars, and we won't proceed until we have a...
You're saying the slab has been poured on the...
On the inside?
On the inside of the carport to raise it level with the house.
Okay, right, okay.
Tell me if there's two other pictures showing that, some of the concepts that I gave to the clerk.
Okay. We have additional pictures that we can show as concepts of design, if, uh, if you would like to see them.
Yeah, one minute.
I think we've seen them.
They've seen them.
We've seen, all right.
We, we, I mean, we have it in our packet, we have the, you have the mock-up.
There's another one, there's a newer one that shows it.
We just passed it around.
Okay.
Here we go.
Okay, thank you. Is anyone else speaking for case number one-nine dash three-one-eight S-B-A-C?
Mr. Jean had just a couple of comments.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, of course, you're familiar with our staff report, but we also had quite a bit of evidence presented by the applicant here today regarding the hardship, and obviously, if you consider that argument on hardship as something that you would be inclined to approve, staff would have no, no objection to that.
All right, anyone else speaking for case number B eight, I'm sorry, one-nine dash three-one-eight dash BAC? Anyone speaking against case number one-nine dash three-one-eight dash BAC? You guys can have a seat.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, you have four letters of support for the approval.
Yes, sir.
Just for the record.
Yes, sir. All right, do you have a motion?
I have a question.
Yeah. Question from the board, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just, just a quick question from staff. Do we know the distance from the sidewalk to the current roof line? We don't know.
They have... To the current roof line?
Yeah, so seventeen feet or nineteen feet comes out, how far from the sidewalk will that be then?
Looks like it's thirty-nine feet total, from what I'm looking at right now.
So roughly halfway?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Do you have a motion?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Moss, let us vote.
What was the motion, Mr. Chairman?
To approve. To approve. To approve. All right, motion carries. Next. Yes, ma'am. Next case, case number one-nine dash three-one-nine dash BAC, express car wash.
Hello, I'm Chase Burns, one-six-five A W Drive, Stonewall, Louisiana, seven-one-zero-seven-eight. So to refresh you guys on what we spoke on last month about the site, this was an old rundown car, um, gas station that we took, demoed, and we ended up taking down two of the signs that were, that were there, and they were both pretty, I think, they were both around a hundred square foot total signage-wise. And so, yeah, we took those down, and now we're proposing to put up a, a new sign, only one sign, not two, and this sign will go on the Burke Coons frontage. And so, I, at first, we, we tried to, we tried to get, well, I spoke to our sign company, and they, they said, okay, this is what, you know, this is what's going to be allowed by the UDC, and I was like, okay, this, this just won't work for this size because of the speed limit at that area, and then how far away you can actually see the sign, and then the existing signs around that site, it would just look, you know, funny, and plus we're competing basically with the other businesses around that site for, you know, visibility. And if, they basically tower over the site that is allowable, or the sign that's allowable. And so I'd like to show kind of what that looks like scaled from five hundred feet away from that sign at that intersection. So this, this is what would be allowed. And, and this is the sign, you can see it right there, it's a tiny little dot. That is what, that's, I think that sign is twelve feet, twelve and a half feet wide, five feet tall, and at five hundred feet, that's what it would, that's what it would look like. And now, if you look at the McDonald's and the Sonic, I believe the McDonald's sign's about two-hundred-and-fifty feet from that sign, and then the Sonic is about two-hundred-and-twenty-five feet. In comparison, you see the, the hardship that a person would have, and us in particular would have, trying to, trying to draw attention to us, because you obviously can't see it. And so what we, what we are proposing is, is really not that, I feel it's not that much. This, this sign right here is nineteen feet wide, it's six feet tall, and as you can tell, that extra, I believe it's about forty, forty square foot, makes a, makes a big difference in, in visibility, and plus it causes no obstruction to any passing traffic, it doesn't, you know, it's not going to harm any, you know, anybody else. And it, and, and, you know, for us, I think we talked about it last time, was how much of our business is reliant on impulse, and it's eighty, eighty percent. Eighty percent of the people don't know they're going to get a car wash when they leave the house that day. And so our biggest asset is basically visibility and attention. If we can't, if we're not able to grab attention, you know, in, in an efficient way, we're, we're going to go out of business. So that sign is one of our greatest assets, and to have it not visible is a complete hardship for us. And, you know, especially at a, now, if we're competing with signs that are also the same size as ours, I can understand how, you know, you'd say that, hey, that's not a hardship, everybody else has the same size, but in this particular case, we're competing with signs that would be quadruple the size of what we have. And as a business that relies on, on capture rates, it's going to kill us to have that size sign at that intersection. So I'd like to pass this around, can I pass this around? Because I, I saw in the staff report that, you know, we didn't indicate a hardship. And I'd just like to reiterate that, that the hardship is the inability to see the sign in comparison to, to the signs around us and grab attention from, you know, prospect customers passing our site.
Can you speak to the, we have a note about an update, but you're also gonna install a billboard?
So that, that is actually a lease, a leasing of that site as well, that, that applied for that billboard permit. And that's, I believe it's a Digivision is the name of the, of the company that, that applied for that permit. That's the leasing of that space.
Your property?
Of, of the owner's property, I mean, yeah.
So they leased space on the space you lease?
Yes, correct. Yes, the space that Express Car Wash leases, correct.
How does that work?
Well, actually, I mean, I believe it's just a, it's just a small, tiny, it's like a three-foot, three-foot wide sign, three-foot wide area.
Yeah, but it's, can they sublease, sublet?
It, it's not a problem. The sign, the billboard is all premise and the sign, he's applying for his own premise every time.
So the billboard's not a consideration for us, really?
The billboard is not a consideration whatsoever if it causes any hardship, it cannot be considered.
Right, okay.
In your determination.
How tall, how tall is that Sonic sign?
You know, I can't, I can't say for sure. It's probably fifty feet. It's taller than what we took down. So the top, the signs we took down are forty feet. We're not asking to go any higher than those. We just wanna, we just wanna, you know, competitive size, surface-wise.
And do you know what their surface is?
Oh, the Sonic? I'm not a hundred percent positive. I mean, it looks to be, the signs that we took down were about a hundred and ten square foot apiece. And that's just the top part. That's not including the, the marquee. So total, they're probably roughly, I'd say, one eighty to two hundred square foot. I think Sonic's probably gonna try to get the same thing. It looks like the shelf, you know, they obviously maximized, you know, what they were allowed. And they wanted to put it on both sides. So I'd say two hundred, back then, it probably was two hundred square foot. And the total size, what we're proposing is, you know, this is a hundred and sixty-two square foot.
So again, a question for staff. Are the Sonic sign now non-conforming?
It is.
Okay, cool. As well as the McDonald's?
Yes.
See, this is a problem we're having.
It appears that the Raceway sign across the street is much lower.
It's lower, yeah.
I don't know if Reggie had an opportunity to, to look at it, but it does not seem close to the heights of the Sonic or the McDonald's signs. And if you recall, the staff report, with all of their calculations, it revealed that there was adequate time, adequate space, driving the normal speed limit. That's allowed on Burt Coons to see those signs from coming west and going east.
I mean, I'm just curious, just from a point of interest, how, how do you determine scale for these two?
Take, so basically, I was five hundred feet from this, from that, from that proposed where the sign's gonna be. And then I took the size of the, our nineteen-foot, and then based it off of a size that we already knew, which is, which is the size of the, I believe, I can't remember the picture.
It was a little with the smaller.
Yeah, so, so there's a, that fire hydrant right there.
Okay.
It's, it's three, it's like three and a half feet. And so, was able to scale off of that.
No, but, I mean, but how did you scale it on this picture and on this picture? How, how did you determine? I mean, perspective, so take into account perspective and scale?
Right. So I had, I had, I had our sign company do it. And that's kind of what they came back to ask. I believe they, I'm sure they did it the same way. They took a size that they knew and scaled from there.
Mr. Hendricks brought up a good point. I mean, the vantage point from these photographs is from a left turn lane that you can't, if you're in, you're not going to by your spot, right?
Correct.
If you're three lanes over in the lane where you, you know, where you would be able to access, access your facility.
I, I mean, to be, to be fair, I don't think it, I don't think it would make too big of a difference, you know, as far as seeing it.
So I have a question for you on that. So you're saying that this busy intersection, where some of the same people travel this area every day, 'cause I live in this area, I don't exactly what you're talking about, you're saying that they're not gonna see your big red building and know that there's a car wash right there?
I mean, you know, the optimal, you know, way, what you're looking for is you want a building on a hill, you know? And, and that intersection has really put us at a disadvantage anyways because we're at the low point of the, of the intersection, basically. We're the low, the lowest land at that intersection. And so, to me, it, you know, whenever you're, you're looking at sites, you don't wanna put yourself below, below a hill. And right now, you know, that, our tower is actually below the intersection. Where the grade of that, of where the slab is sitting on is below that intersection. So, you know, that kind of puts us a, a small disadvantage. And I'm not saying, you know, people, obviously, you know, you're gonna see red building, you know, if you're, if you're looking. And I just feel like if, the signage is, is, is our main, you know, our main asset. And it's, it's something out by the street. It's not off the street one hundred feet because of an offset or setback. And so, you know, I, I don't, I really don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Alright, thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number 19-319-BAC?
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Mario Chavez. I live in 9021 Blonde Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71118. Hello, newly direct, appointed Alan Clark, Director, and Ms. Dunn, welcome aboard. I want to speak on behalf of 19318-BAC, the Express Car Wash. I also bring the joining sentiments of our City Councilman, James Fleury, who could not be here, who also called to ask that you guys support the variance for our district. I know the UDC has put a lot of new stipulations in place and it's, it's a living document and it's something that is made to make our community better. But obviously, you guys know that there's some certain situations that it's really hindered progress and it's hurt some businesses. Mr. Berry, you, you mentioned it, this is, would be one of those situations where all the other signs are congruent with each other and they look uniform. However, I believe if we go with what the UDC states and we make the smaller sign and we do not allow for the variance, it'll look abnormal being on that intersection where all the other businesses have been congruent for so many years. So I would like to see that we made the sign the same size and allowed for the variance to match the Sonic and the McDonald's. And although the sign across the street, directly across the street, the Raceway is shorter, it's actually twice as big as the proposed variance that they would like to add. I don't know if you guys have driven by there. I know, Mr. Hendricks, you have. It's literally a billboard sign is what the Raceway has out there. And it's a lot bigger than what they're requesting. I know as, as policymakers, you guys take the staff's recommendation. And I really appreciate what you guys do and, and your business sense on what you do it. I know that the, the UDC has some guidelines and you guys are more likely to support those guidelines of the UDC. But this would be one of the situations where I, where I would ask you guys to use some good judgment and to vote in favor of the businesses, to support the jobs and the economic development that we've had in Southern Hills. Right through that corridor, we've had the Thrifty Liquor and we've had the Neighborhood Store Walmart. They've both been installed. They look great. They're booming. And their signs are a little larger as well. They were predated before the UDC and we hadn't had an issue with that. I think the view would be perfectly fine driving through that corridor and seeing Mr. Byrne's sign the way that he would like it to see. And I would like to see the uniformity of the other four signs, that they all look the same. I know we do need to go to the drawing board and, and do a couple changes with the UDC. And I know we're all working on that. But for this specific situation, I would ask that you guys give him the variance and allow at least that corner to stay congruent and look nice. It's gonna be a beautiful building. Everything that they do is top-notch. And I'm looking forward to having that car wash right on the corner and having four brand-new buildings right there on Linwood and Burt Coons and them all looking great and them all being in commerce. And we getting the tax revenues that we, we're gonna get from those. It will build an, ultimately, a great inventory of businesses, beautiful businesses in Southern Hills. And I just ask that you guys grant this variance to increase the property values for all the Southern Hills owners with new added beautiful businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, sir.
Have a question.
Absolutely.
I'm sure you can appreciate. So in this transition period with the new UDC, there's always gonna be a non-conforming sign or multiple signs in an area where new businesses go in. At what point do we uphold the guidelines or the goals of the UDC if we don't start denying those that aren't in conformity with the UDC? And then allow those older signage, once they become defunct, to go away? How do we transition to what the UDC espouses as a goal? If, if we always give a variance, at some point, there's no point in having the new guidelines?
Mr. Mr. Berry, I totally agree with you. And that's actually the question that I've asked myself, is how do we transition to this new? Well, two things come to mind. One, may the new UDC not be the best for everybody? For instance, if those three other businesses have been there flourishing with those signs being that size and no one's ever complained and you can, you don't, there's no car wrecks because of those larger signs, if it looks great, perhaps the document of the UDC for that specific situation at that specific miles-per-hour zone may need to be adjusted. But likewise, in the transition period of when do we start, I don't wanna say follow law, but follow the rule of what we've implemented for ourselves, that's a good question. If there wasn't three other businesses there, then I would say now is the time. If Chase was the first person here on that blight corner with nobody else there, I'm sorry, sir, we have a law and we have rules for a reason. But when we're putting him in the mix of three other businesses, and now if you expand back and you guys see the view and, and you see how it really looks as you're driving down there, six other businesses, it's gonna look very abnormal and un-uniform with that very small sign sitting there amongst all those other businesses. So to answer your question, I wanna go back to UDC and say, and what specifics should we change? But in this situation, in this one independently, this one may be one of those reasons where we may say, this is the reason for the ZBA and, and the great minds that you have amongst you to make the decision to say, this may be one of the ones where we may need, need to let slide through so that it looks congruent to the others.
I appreciate that. I'm just wondering about what happens to the next three, four, five, six businesses that come along that corridor. They're, they're gonna have the same argument. And then at some point, we're gonna have a whole string of oversized signs. Whereas what would be better is if we could get the McDonald's and the Sonic to the size of what we want the, the car wash sign to be. But we can't make them tear it down just because it's non-conforming. We have to wait for either Mother Nature to do it or for them to go out of business and someone else come in and then enforce it then.
Correct. Or work on the UDC to raise the square footage.
You're, you're uniquely qualified and positioned to do that.
Right. And hey, I'm, I'm with you. I know there's some stuff that I've already set down the pipe that I'd like to see done, with, specifically with signs.
Right. But I, I just, I guess we consider ourselves at some point to be upholding what the City Council has instituted by passing the UDC.
Correct.
So at some point, we feel under a mandate from the City Council. And, and so, it, it sometimes feels that we're caught in the middle between what we're expected to do and then what we want to do, you know?
Mr. Berry, I completely understand. I deal with that every day when I sit up there. And ultimately, the goal is always, what's the best for the citizens of Shreveport? What's the best end result? And obviously, jobs, economic growth, and safety. And in this situation, I don't see anything that's gonna hinder the safety. But I do see what's gonna hinder revenue for the Express Car Wash. And then ultimately, that will trickle down to decreased jobs and ultimately, worst-case scenario, the car wash not being there because no clients. And then I have to deal with what else can we find to put in that location? So it, it is, it is a tough job that, that we have.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number 19-319-BAC?
I'm Fred White from Commercial Construction and Development, 722 North Ashley Ridge Loop in Shreveport, over in Ashley Ridge. And I'm here today to support the application for the Burns, I think. Chase and Mario did a really good job of explaining their dilemma. They tore down an old Shell station there, building a really high-tech car wash, aluminum composite panels, lots of glass, stone. These are very high-tech facilities, very costly facilities. And as a result, they have to generate a lot of traffic to be able to make them economically viable. They have been customers of mine for about twenty-five years, always been a growing business in this area, provided lots of jobs and, and a lot of growth. And frankly, Mr. Byrne stuck his neck out a lot of times over the years to make his business successful. And they said that eighty percent of their traffic is impulse traffic. We did the one on Pine's Road for them a couple of years ago. It was a tear-down of an old car wash and we built a new facility with the Tommy Wash design. And their competitor across the street has a sign that's twice as large as theirs. The competitor that was there before them is also a car wash. And, but they, they built that one in accordance with the UDC. And they're at a disadvantage there on Pine's Road. This is obviously a much higher-profile site, being at one of the most prime corners in Shreveport at Burt Coons and Linwood. I think that the size that the UDC allows would really look out of place for that corner. I think there may be a time, you know, to, to maybe conform differently with the UDC requirements, maybe when we have a stronger economic climate in Shreveport. We have a very fragile economy here. I've been a contractor here for thirty-five years. Our economy is becoming more fragile every day. And this is honestly the first time in my career that I have more projects out of town than I do in Shreveport. I've traditionally done one or two jobs a year in other cities. Right now, I've got four projects in Monroe, two in Tyler, one in Kilgore. It's a difficult economic situation here. And, and, you know, especially if there's no opposition to an applicant, I feel like they should be given favor in these unusual circumstances because signage is so important for someone to be able to justify an investment of that, of that large amount. It's just an expensive piece of real estate. It's an expensive structure. The equipment's very expensive. And they just have to be able to generate, there's, car washes in Shreveport don't, don't generate nearly the car washes per day that they do in, in Tyler or Bossier or other markets. And it's just, makes it increasingly more difficult for them to sustain with these smaller sign requirements. And so, I, I encourage you to give them favor, being that there's no opposition at all. And, you know, maybe we'll have a better economic time in the future and we can tighten up our, our guidelines. But I don't think now's the time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else speaking for case number 19-319-BAC?
Todd Burns, 1225 Mercedes-Benz Drive. I'm the owner of Express Car Wash. And I just really wanted to come up and answer a question that Alan asked earlier and was about, when is the time? And I would tell you that the facility we built on Pine's Road, there is a, and I'll call it by name, a Zip's Car Wash across the street used to be Boomerang. And it has a approximately a hundred-foot sign with a huge square footage. We followed the UDC code because it worked out well in that location. You know, buildings were tight together. So it, it's not a situation where it would be a total, total disadvantage for us. The Kentucky Fried Chicken sign was not much taller and probably also fit close with the UDC code. So we were able to say, alright, we'll take this one on the chin. We'll let our competitor have a bigger sign. The situation on Linwood at Burt Coons is, it's not just the Sonic or, or the McDonald's. The Sherwin-Williams sign, I mean, all along there, every sign is, would be dwarf the footage that UDC allows. And therefore, as Chase explained, eighty percent of our business is impulse. If you never see our sign till you get past it or even with the building, the building will stand out. But if you get past it, it's too late. You, usually, you miss that capture rate. If they can see it when they're traveling down the street, chances are they'll click in their mind, yeah, I will pull in there and get a car wash. But when ours is dwarfed... But when ours is dwarfed, they're going to miss our sign, and we've lost the business.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If you are, I don't know which direction that is, if you are headed toward the McDonald's and you're going to be on the left.
If you're headed towards the McDonald's and I'm going to be on the left, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, so you'd be headed east. You'd be headed east, yes.
Is there a curb cut? Or do you have to go to intersection and come back to you?
There is not a curb cut. You have to go to the intersection and come back to us.
Okay, so it's important for you to grab people headed west?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
I just had one question.
Yes, sir.
Sitting here looking at that intersection, and looking at it very close and very hard. I'm looking at traffic coming north of Linwood, looking at traffic coming south of Linwood, coming west on Burt Coons, and, as you said, east on Burt Coons. And it just gives the impression that at no time would you actually miss this car wash and a sign at this car wash. There is some, the Metropolitan Planning Commission is very much concerned about supporting and bringing businesses into the city of Shreveport, and ensuring that these businesses are successful. There is a rationale to the sign ordinance and the reduction in the environmental clutter that all of these signs have created. At one time, it was considered historically that the taller the sign, the better you see from the furthest distance, and that brought customers to a location. Generally, that worked when you had a McDonald's and a Burger King. You wanted to make sure that if you were coming on these highways, you saw the sign of the competitors. In this case, the question you asked, that bothers us very much, all of these signs are non-conforming. And by definition, non-conformities mean that they will be allowed to stand, but the goal is that they will go away, that somebody will not be able to come back and erect a hundred-foot sign. If we get the non-conformities gone, we clear the visual clutter along our arteries, our main streets and so forth, and our interstates, our city is a much more beautiful city. And that was a problem that the staff had, and with the recommendation that it made. If the Sonic sign was blocking the ability to see the car wash sign, then that would be considered a hardship. From what we are seeing, coming off of the hill, headed west, you will very easily see the car wash sign. We found no real, no real obstacles or no real hardships that would prevent this business from being successful. Just wanted you to understand why the planner from the MPC staff made the recommendation that she made, because after careful consideration, doing all of the possibilities of granting the variance, she couldn't come up with no real rationale for granting this variance.
Can I speak to them?
One minute.
One minute. One of the other things that we think we did to clean it up, Mr. Clark, was there were two signs there, 40 feet tall. We removed one, totally did away with it. So, when you talk about clutter, I want you guys to keep that in mind, that we took one sign and totally did away with it. That was 40 foot tall. They had a sign on Burt Coons, and they had a sign on Linwood. We removed the Linwood sign. So, we feel like, as a business, we're doing our part to help control the clutter. And, no disrespect, but I appreciate them thinking that the business will do fine, but at the end of the day, it's my dollars on the line that have to make that determination. And my thought is, I need every advantage I can have to draw business to my location. And I believe that this sign is not asking for anything that's totally out of line or not, that's going to add clutter. And again, I reiterate the fact that we removed, totally removed a sign and put one in.
Alright, thank you, sir. Is anyone else speaking for case number 19-319-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number 19-319-BAC? Alright, there are none?
I have a question for staff, just to be clear about the, just to be clear about the requested variance in square footage. Is that a...
I can go over there if you'd like, Chair. So, the proposal is for 110 square feet plus the 52 square feet, which comes up to 162 square feet, and what's allowable in the code is 80.
So, it's a three-time?
No, just double.
Double, double. Six, yes, sorry. So, a 50% increase? Thank you.
Alright.
I have a question, too. The Raceway is right across from me. I know, did we speak to that earlier? Is that sign in conformity? Is that, is that sign?
None of them are at the intersection.
It's probably not conforming also.
Because I know it came late, okay.
The desire is that signage at that corner is greatly reduced
Okay.
over a period of time.
Okay.
I have a question for staff as well, and it's just throwing this out there. At what point would those signs ever become conforming? Because I don't think McDonald's or Sonic are ever going away. I don't think that Raceway is ever going away. So, those signs could probably sit there for 100 years, maybe, at that particular size, or...
That's a possibility, like I shared earlier. The only way you get rid of these signs is by declaring them, changing the code, declaring them non-conforming, and not allowing them to re-establish if anything happens to them, where they come down, or they're damaged beyond the 50% to restore. That is the only way that you get an opportunity to eliminate these signs, other than these companies embracing the ideology of the city and reducing the signs voluntarily.
Thank you, sir.
Which will never happen.
Right.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question for the staff. Do we consider, because I'm looking at the Pine's Road sign and how that sign conforms with the other signs, do we look at those side-by-sides with the non-conforming in those two areas and compare?
The Pine's Road sign, from what I recall, it did not require any variances or anything. It is actually less than the minimal size that the ordinance allows. Part of them, the rationale that was utilized was that that sign is quite visible along Pine's Road. If you travel Pine's Road, it presents no problems as far as being able to be seen. The planners did calculations based on speeds, how much speed it would take, at what speed in order to see the sign, and that has been no problem on Pine's Road.
Are any of those signs surrounding the Pine's Road location non-conforming, like the Canes or the KFC sign?
The KFC sign is probably non-conforming. The Canes, all of these signs are pre-unified development code. So, they're all probably non-conforming. I think the difficulty is, when you adopt a code, you have certain intentions associated with the adoption of a code, any code. And this is the process that you have to go through to achieve the desires, the concepts, the philosophies of the code. As one of the staff members said, you can't continue to just allow these signs to populate, because if you continue to allow them to populate, they will never go away. And you will always have tall signs that are environmentally clustering the environment of Shreveport. If we decide that we want our city to change its direction, we're not, and I stress, we want to make sure every business has an opportunity to make it. We fight extremely hard in our decisions and in our research, trying to make sure every business that's interested in being in the city of Shreveport has every available opportunity and advantage. But if you want signs to continue to stick up in the sky, and you allow variances that allow additional signs to reach for the clouds, this is what you've got to have.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions or comments at this time?
You have to make a motion if somebody's chair.
Yes, sir.
Move to deny.
It's been moved, I hear a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Moss, that we deny.
I'd like to make a comment. I'm basing this denial on the fact, I guess I've already explained it, I think that, given the fact that we're sitting at the intersection, and if you're approaching the intersection, I just feel like you'll see the sign. I mean, you're not going to... I think I've expressed it, in the fact that I think that we have gotten into a trap of continuing to approve, even though there is no, in my opinion, stated hardship in this particular area. We heard about a quote hardship earlier because the location was a certain distance off the interstate. And at some point, if your location is not adequate, then choose a different location. If you think that you have a substandard, if you're at a disadvantage with the lot, then maybe that's not the place that you should be. And I think that we also get into the trap of being encouraged to vote for, or because we have a good operator, and we have a great business model, and we have a great, this is a great guy, and this is a great person, but we don't zone people. And I think people come before us espousing these benefits that are beneficial and welcome to the community, but that really don't have any bearing on what we are tasked to decide. And I think if we don't start implementing what our elected leaders have put before us and charged us to implement, then I think that we have no point in being here. And so, I just wanted to clarify, and for the record, why I'm choosing to make a motion to deny.
Alright, motion's still on the floor. Let us vote.
I have a second. I have a second.
Yes to deny, no to approve.
A yes vote would be for deny.
Everyone vote? Alright, motion carries. Next case on the agenda is case number 19-320-BAC, Digivision.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before Mr. Arseneau speaks, I want to let the board know that there is an error in the staff report. If you look on page two, second paragraph, where it says, "MPC staff originally recommended approval of this request, that should not be in the staff report." That was left over from a template base. So, I just wanted the board to be aware of that before Mr. Arseneau spoke.
My name is Tom Arseneau, 333 Texas Street, Regent's Tower, Suite 700, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7111. I represent Digivision. This is not a variance. The permit that was applied for by Digivision meets every requirement of the UDC. There was one and only one reason that the permit was denied, and that because it was the belief of the zoning administrator that the property had been rezoned solely to put a billboard. Number one, that issue should have been addressed during the zoning. Number two, it isn't accurate. It isn't accurate. This property was rezoned C2. You didn't go through the whole process of this, but I did represent the applicant on the zoning. She originally applied for a C3. There was difficulty with that, so it came back to the MPC with a backup to go to C2. C2 was granted by the City Council on July 23rd. That's a very important date. The first time that the property was rezoned to commercial was July 23rd. In early September, not very long after that, in early September, the applicant, the developer applicant, put in a request for a pre-application meeting to work on the site plan. The deadline to be on the September 19th agenda for pre-application, which is when this one took place, was September 5th. So, the only passage of time, July 23, plus the effective date of the ordinance, because it was a zoning change, to September the 5th. The applicant met with the MPC staff and other people on the pre-application notice on the 19th of September. On the 20th of September, the applicant received a confirmation, these are the things that you need to look at, and then she began to work on those things. Notwithstanding all of that, your staff report says that they've just assumed, they just assumed that the property was being rezoned solely for purposes of billboard. One, you shouldn't be basing decisions on assumption, and number two, the assumption's So, Digivision is here to ask you to overturn the erroneous decision of the zoning administrator. Why the staff report continues to hold on to that error, I do not know. But it does, and it's wrong. And if you were not to overturn the zoning administrator, you would be acting arbitrarily and capriciously, meaning wrong. Digivision has the right to put this billboard where it is, and there is no basis to deny the permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am?
What are you going to put on, what's going to be on the property?
Office building?
Office building?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Sartori's going to come after me to tell you what she intends to do. She submitted a site, she has not applied officially for a site plan. This is difficult, if you look at where this property is, getting access is going to be difficult. She has to negotiate that with the... She has to negotiate that with the Department of Transportation Development, those are two state highways, and she couldn't even begin that negotiation process until the property was rezoned. So it's gonna be a long process, because it's a difficult piece of property. But it was not rezoned to put a billboard. The fact that it was rezoned allows a billboard.
So she has not submitted plans?
Not yet, she's working on that. When you go to that pre-application meeting, you get a whole laundry list of things that you have to do, and she's working on those things, but she's gonna be here to tell you that she intends to develop that property. She submitted a conceptual site plan when she got her rezoning. So there's never been any, there's no evidence whatsoever that this property was rezoned solely for purposes of a billboard. None whatsoever.
So she's going through the process now to submit plans to bill something?
Yes, ma'am, there are a lot of, like I say, a lot of difficulties with this, but it's a wrong assumption, and it's also not the right time to raise the issue. If they had these suspicions, they should have raised these issues before. This was unanimously passed by the MPC and the City Council.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
In answering Ms. Pearson's question, the actual appeal is of the zoning administrator's decision, and he denied the application. I think he can explain to you the rationale he used to deny the application, and also answer your question.
With all due respect to Mr. Clark, when one denies, they have to give a written reason. I gave you the written reason in the email that I sent. The only reason that was given, the only reason that was given, was that property can't be rezoned solely for purposes of establishing a billboard. That's all we are here about. Period.
And I don't know if you don't want him to explain why he feels that this property was rezoned strictly for the purpose of a billboard or not. As executive director, I was giving you that opportunity to ask him as the zoning administrator.
Okay.
That's all that I have. The assumption, the assumption, one, it shouldn't be based on an assumption. Number two, the assumption was wrong, the decision was wrong, you should reverse it. Be glad to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
And I'd like to ask, Ms. Sartori will come up next.
Just a second.
I'd just like for the administrator to...
Yeah, just hold just a second, we'll bring the denials up after all of the, those that are four. Okay, is there anyone else speaking for case number 19-320-BAC?
I've done everything I'm supposed to do in the right way. I don't understand what is actually happening and why all this is happening. The last meeting that I attended, put that there, the last meeting I attended with all the engineers, we discussed the entrance and the exit to my building. The fire department was there, they spoke about what I needed to do to revise, so that their fire trucks could go in easily and exit easily. I've spoken with the DOT, they've told me what I need to do, they've agreed with the entrance and the exit of where I have on the plans. We are going to, since this is, 70th Street is considered a highway, and I have to get water and sewer to the location, I'm going to have to change the building slightly, so that we can reach water and sewer. I am in contact with my architect, and we are planning to build at this location. I would not have gone through all this. I don't understand what the issue is with what y'all are denying. What I'm trying to do is offset some of the costs of this, and this company approached me and said they would be willing to pay to have their sign there. Well, who wouldn't want that? Are there any questions?
This photograph doesn't have it, but I think we saw one that had the billboard overlay. It seems like it will be...
Yeah, it did not.
Unattractive.
I didn't, no, it's not.
And right in the middle of the entrance to your building, overshadowing your building, is that something...
And we, I mean, that is, this particular one is an old, the plans that we have are being updated, so that, that's not even gonna be where the location of the signs, I mean, the location of the parking. It may be moved just a little bit clockwise.
So we're still dealing with a lot of variables in this?
There is no variables. I've been through meeting after meeting to meet the zoning, I have met the zoning. Now, I'm working with the engineers, my architect, to get the site, I mean, get the plans as they need to be, so that I can conform with water and sewage, fire, electricity, all that takes time.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll be the first to say I'm not a traffic engineer, or I'm not versed on all of the ins and outs of it, but I see two things about your curb cut, is that one thing that's under consideration? Is your...
No, no, the DOT said that was fine. That's not the issue at all.
Your storm drain right in the middle of yours.
Right, and so what the architect has said, that we would make, I don't know what it's called, a divide where you come in one way and go out, and there's a divide, that's where the storm drain is.
Right.
So that there won't be any construction on that, no driving on it.
And the distance from the intersection is satisfactory to DOT?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else speaking for case number 19-320-BAC? Is there anyone speaking against case number 19-320-BAC?
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for your time. My name is Daniel Dugan, I represent Lamar Advertising, it's 1800 Pierre Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71103. We are here to oppose this appeal request. Lamar supports the MPC denial of this billboard application, because the rules in the UDC are very clear. Property may not be rezoned for a billboard, and if property is rezoned, there must be viable commercial activity present before a billboard can be built. This has been clear, and there's a long history of enforcing this rule by the MPC. Also, a recent UDC amendment was passed stating that active construction, other than the billboard, must commence on the property prior to any billboard application. As of now, there is no approved site plan for the building, and the only application on this property is for the new billboard. This billboard was planned long before the rezoning of the property. I personally discussed this exact situation with the property owner, Paul Davis, over a year ago. Mr. Davis's plan, from the beginning, was to rezone this lot to commercial for the purpose of a billboard. I informed him that the property could not be rezoned for a billboard, but only for a viable commercial reason. And if it is rezoned, a commercial building must be present on the property before any billboard could be constructed. If there's not a building present, then this is not a conforming billboard location. Every billboard operator must abide by the rules as written, and not be allowed to ignore them just to suit their needs. This is not a simple variance request of a few feet to allow billboard to fit into a site plan. This would rewrite the rules to allow billboard at an illegal location. Allowing this appeal would not only undermine the MPC staff ruling, including Mr. Allen Clark, it would effectively change the UDC regulations regarding property being rezoned for the purpose of a billboard. If this were to be approved, then every other billboard operator could expect to have their future appeals granted on similar grounds. As Mr. Berry stated in the previous case, at some point, we must uphold the rules of the UDC. This is not the first time Digivision has asked to go around the regulations as written, and if this is appeal, this appeal is allowed, you will open the door to future en runs around the rules. Lamar has adhered to the rules, and we've been turned down for permits before. We did not try to go around them, and we respect the decision of the MPC staff and We're in this situation now because Digivision was allowed to move two old permits that they decided not to build, they were allowed to move these to new locations. Under the UDC, permits cannot be moved to a new property. New permits must be acquired, and this is not something Digivision could accomplish. After months of disputes with the MPC, a COTEX amendment was passed by the MPC and City Council. This allowed for Digivision to build, for their two unbuilt permits to be moved from 2017 unbuilt permits to be moved to alternate locations by August 17, 2019. And any billboard at the new location would have to be constructed within 90 days of August 17. And we're currently at the end of that period. Lamar was active in discussions and the process that led to this amendment, and we did not oppose it. But now that they're asking to move one of these permits to an illegal location, we have no choice but to oppose it, and to stand by the MPC decision. If this appeal is granted, Lamar Advertising will plan to appeal to the District Court. We ask that you please take these points into consideration. And I'm here to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else speaking against case number 19-320-BAC?
Good afternoon, my name's Keith Berry, I'm the GM and VP with Lamar Advertising. I live at 4033 Pine Wood Street in...
Three minutes, sir.
Okay, on Pine Wood Street in Benton, Louisiana. I'm here to just add a little bit to that, we are not against this being built, as far as the location of the buildings that are here. What we're here to argue is that the rules and regulations have been set forth, we follow the rules. We haven't tried to have any variances or anything to the rules as far as this goes. And this is not a variance, he stated it himself, this is not a variance what they're trying to do. They're trying to change the rules that are in the UDC. That's what they're trying to do. He also stated just a minute ago that this building is gonna be hard to make this work, right? So she also stated that this is not the plans that they're probably gonna use, because they're gonna have to change it up a little bit because of water and sewer and other things. When they do that, that changes everything, and it moves, and it brings in other rules and regulations that are set forth in the UDC, that you have no idea that they're gonna meet, such as overhanging a building. It's a very small piece of property right there, so if we're gonna, if they're gonna make that work, and y'all are gonna grant them this, then you have to know exactly what that's gonna look like. If not, it's just illegal, and there's no reason at all to pass this for them. So, once again, we stand with Mr. Allen and the MPC, and if you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
There are none, thank you, sir.
Cuban.
Anyone else speaking against case number 19-320-BAC? Right, zoning administrator, could you give us your report now, sir?
Oh, I don't have a report, I have a reason why I denied the application.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear. We wanna hear, right?
Okay, well, at the time of denial, they didn't have, as Mr. Arseneau stated, I think Ms. Sartori is her name, I don't wanna mispronounce it, had a prepaid conference at the time of the denial, that was, the prepaid conference hadn't taken place. So, in my opinion, from what the code states, that a property can't be rezoned for the sole purpose of a billboard, from my standpoint, there was no site plan presented, there was no DOT approval for these curb cuts, there were no building permits pulled, there was nothing in the system or in our office, there was nothing that had taken place to show that a building was gonna be on the property, or some type of commercial establishment was gonna be on the property. So in my opinion, the property was, at this point, was just rezoned for the purpose, sole purpose of putting a billboard up.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for staff and the zoning administrator as well, I suppose, and it goes back to something that Mr. Dugan, or Dugan? Dugan said, when he read, he cited an ordinance or regulation that there has to be a commercial building existing, or there has to be a plan in place prior to any billboard permit. I'd like to know what the veracity of that is.
I mean, Adam Bailey too.
Was he talking about the COTEX amendment? So, recently... Which, what was it? A COTEX amendment has been recommended by the MPC, has been moved to City Council as well as Parish Commission, solely based around this to, if you wanna say beef it up, but to clearly delineate the site plan approval, construction activity, and a building permit, so that in the future, this would never hopefully happen again. Now, that COTEX amendment is not in the books right now, but it's currently in the works. Okay, so what he cited is proposed.
Proposed.
Okay, thank you. That's all, yeah?
Anyone else have any questions or comments at this time? All right, do I hear a motion?
No.
I'm sorry, you're exactly right, come through, I figured he would have one.
Yes, the 500-pound bear comes out of the forest. What we see now is why Lamar is here, and their position is completely untenable. Because what he said was the law is not the law. Digivision was entitled this permit when it applied for it, Mr. Jordan has now basically admitted that had he known then what he knew now, he would have granted the permit. You should overturn it and grant the permit. Be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, all minds clear? All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for discussion. Motion to overturn administrative decision.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the discussion.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Farrell, let us vote on...
No.
We have a discussion.
What, discussion? What, discussion?
So, the way I appreciate it is, at the time, Mr. Jordan made the appropriate decision based on the information he had. If they are in the process of, and the amendments to the UDC as stated by Mr. Dugan are not, were not in place, as I understood it first, and there was no specific language about one permit predating another. And they are, in fact, planning to build, which we have no reason to doubt, I guess. I mean, we have to take people at their word. Then I think it's only fair to allow them to proceed. I don't know if there's, I guess what I don't know is, at what point do we get another look at the site plan and the placement of both the structures and the billboard?
I don't think if you overturn the zoning administrator's decision today, that you have any control on what, if every building is built on that site. They, I think that the zoning administrator made a very, with the information, and the only thing that's happened with the COTEX amendments is that it just further clarifies what that section of the ordinance means.
Right.
Doesn't change anything. From our vantage point, from day one, it meant that if a property is rezoned, it cannot be rezoned for the purpose of a billboard. It has to have some form of development on it prior to a permit designation for a billboard.
Right, but my problem is, that's not the language now, and there's no way to know what their intention was, whether we have a feeling about it or not.
And I say...
And so, but my question...
To you is that, that is what, we have to interpret the ordinance. We cannot just ignore, if the ordinance says that a piece of property cannot be rezoned for the purpose of a billboard, we have to look at what's actually happening. We have to look at that site. And on that site, nothing is happening. There's been, there's been no submission of a site plan for development. The curb cut has not, to our knowledge, been officially approved by LA DOTD. There is nothing happening on that site other than it's been rezoned, gone through the process, and now there's an application for a billboard permit.
But what we, I guess my problem is, we don't know that they're not proceeding with this. And so, I think we have to give them the benefit of the doubt.
We don't know that they are proceeding with this.
Right, but I think that we can't, we can't assume they're not.
We can't assume that they are.
But that's...
We can't assume. Not here. We have to just look at what's there.
But here's the thing. To think they're not would mean that they paid money to this person to plan this just to get the Digivision sign, which I guess is in the realm of possibility, but not probable to me.
Well, I guess my only thing is, going back to the lady that got up and gave, talked about the plans, and I don't know if we can do this, until they bring us some updated plans. Because these plans right here are not the plans that they're going to use. You know, who's to say when the new plans come, that billboard might not be suffice for that area?
Right, so that's my question.
I would like to see some updated plans.
That's my question. Does one project have to supersede the other? And can we put controls in place for that? Meaning, if they go ahead, if they build a billboard now, that constrains whatever development happens.
True.
Exactly. So it seems to me, if in good faith, they did not do the zoning change just for the billboard, they will construct their project first and then put the billboard in. But I don't know, my question is, is there a mechanism for us to ensure that?
You can defer and continue to such time as plans have been submitted for the development like that, so?
Can we make it?
Until they bring the new plans.
Okay.
Basically. If there's something you can't...
Mr. Farrell, do you have anything?
It's a slipper slope. I'm with you, you can't assume much, but, I mean, I find it hard to believe that some of that lot can handle that site plan, but I'm not a site plan master.
I mean, I guess, yeah. Then I would like to amend my motion, and I would like to defer and continue. I don't know what's appropriate. I don't know how long they would need to get an appropriate, or get their next site plan in order. I don't know if that's 30 or 60 days.
It was, I have the impression given by the property owner, it's in the works now, and it should be done within the next 30 days.
I'd like to address that.
Just a second.
I'd like to request that you suspend the rule so that I can answer some of these things that have been said that simply are wrong.
Just a second, sir. The question I have as well is, you're talking about the site plan, what about the DOT, how they're going to...
That's part of the site plan, I would assume, is, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the process is, you know, between DOT and the site plan and the architect, and what has to happen first. I mean, they could get a site plan conceivably, and then a month later, they finally get through DOT, and they say, no, that curb cut won't work.
The DOT has said it won't.
She has said that...
She's out of order now, yes.
She has said that DOT has approved it, but I don't know that we have any documentation of that. And that's all part of the site plan process. I guess I want to stress, I would like, I want everyone to know that what we're trying to do is to make this work and assume the best in everybody. So my motion is to defer and continue for 30 days to allow more development of this proposed build-out and project or development, along with a more precise location of where the billboard will be.
That's your motion?
That's my motion.
I second that.
Okay, is it moved by Mr. Berry, second by Mr. Moss? And the motion carries to defer. All right, next case, case number 19-321-BAC, Louisiana Restaurant Equipment.
Yes, my name is Mike Forlito, and I'm here with Louisiana Restaurant Equipment, 426 West Wood Drive, Bossier City, Louisiana, 7111. And I'm here for a variance for Ono's Bar and Grill for a sign issue. And I don't know if any of y'all seen the area or whatever, but we built a very high-end restaurant there, and we're kind of behind the gas station, and we wanted to put up a sign that, you know, you could be seen from the street. Obviously, it's a busy area with the gas station and the new storage building and stuff next door. So anyway, we're looking to try to see if we can get you guys to help us with the sign issue.
Sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Mike Forlito.
Forlito.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Forlito, I just have a question.
Okay.
Is there a reason, or if you know, why your assigned company didn't try to get a permit before they did the work?
I don't. I mean, it was actually even discussed, because we had some permit issues there. So, actually, I was the one that dealt with him, and I told him that, you know, hey, you need to be sure you get a permit before you do this, to make sure everything's in line. Now, we did use an existing pole and stuff, but I'm sure that doesn't make any difference, but...
Well, it actually does. I mean, it's, it's in your favor that it was already there, you just changed the signage on it.
Yeah, sure.
That was all I wanted to know.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking for case number 19-321-BAC?
Good afternoon, Mauro Chavez, 9021 Blon Boulevard, Shreveport, Louisiana, 7118. They had asked me to give them a hand with this on the onset, but after going through the motions with the MPC staff, I appreciate you guys for acknowledging the hardship in the situation that they're in. So I just wanted to speak on behalf of them and say I'm all for it, and thank for what they've done for the community. And in Ricky Leonard's memorial, he fought really hard for this area and its flourish, and is doing amazing, and I thank you that they're continuing on with the fight that Ricky did. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number 19-321-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number 19-321-BAC? Okay, there are none? Do I hear a motion?
Two, three.
Second. The move by Ms. Pearson, second by Mr. Berry, let us vote. And the motion carries. Next case, case number 19-322-BAC, Morehead Pools.
Good afternoon, Michael Moore, Morehead Pools, 7120 Lyon Avenue, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. I am here in an application for variance for our existing sign to be reduced. Basically, the can and the shape of the can to be changed to our new branding. We've been in business since 1960 in the Shreveport area, started downtown, moved to Laza Street, which is a little bit further north than where we, our current location, and then 1989, took over a empty building at 7120 Lyon Avenue that the Fleming Brothers had evacuated from, and my grandparents and then parents operated under, and we've been there since. We rebranded our company in 2018/19, and we updated our logo, a little more modern look. We have painted our building, dressed it up, made it more curbside appeal, if you will, and wish wanted to update our sign, our logo, that in which has to change the shape of the can of our existing sign. I don't know what all documents y'all have. I have a few here that, I don't know if this is where to put them. That's just a cross-section of what our current sign looks like. To the left there, we are proposing our new shape, which is there on the right, that just conforms to our new logo, which is shirt I've worn today. It reduces the size of the sign to try to get as closely to UDC as we can by 30, almost 33 percent. It reduces the signage, square footage, and also lowers the sign, because a monument sign currently in our C2 zone is what is required, but if you put a monument sign in our location, you cannot exit off Kemper Street, which is our adjacent street. You can't see oncoming traffic at Lyon Avenue, and you can only assume how dangerous that would be if you couldn't see oncoming traffic trying to pull out on the side of our location. So we reduce our height by 18 percent to have a smaller footprint. One other document I have here. For a visual context, this is a picture, sorry. That is our existing sign currently, what we have now. And that is a picture or a rendering of our proposed change, basically changing just the can structure on an already existing stubout and pole.
Could you slide it apart so we can see?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
By side? Is that, is that okay? Yeah. But it actually won't be taller, it'll be shorter.
Actually, absolutely, yeah, and that's the other picture I had, yeah. It reduces it, I want to say, from 24 feet down to 20 at its highest. We also are changing a placard to an LED, you can see, so we can, you know, freshen up the look, look a little more modern, and also dress up the area.
And what kinds of things will you put on the LED sign?
Steel images and what you see, you know, just images, we're in the image business, backyard business. We do, we have retail, pull-up retail for our chemicals, retail, drive-up retail, and we also have people through our design center that we have come in with new pools. So occasionally, once a year, we have an annual sale. We'll probably put sales, items, stuff in our brick-and-mortar retail.
Any more questions?
Questions? All right. I know...
Along that, give me one second.
Yeah, sure.
Along that stretch of 70th... All right, you bear with me, sorry.
No, sorry. I got to overhead a few.
Why don't you let me change? I guess my question is, can you slide that top one over a little bit? Let me see further down the street. Okay.
Sir?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
I know in the, oh, in the report, it mentioned the monument sign being placed in the middle of our property, which would take up two parking spots. I employ 42 to 55 people at any given moment of the year. 18 of those are office staff who, they're at the office. I have 18 spots, which already contributes to them having to park in the back lot once my morning crews, i.e. pool cleaners, pool techs, construction crews evacuate the back lot. So, if you have brick-and-mortar retail, you have to have available parking for customers. And so, eating two parking spots would be a tremendous hardship on our situation.
Question, sir, do you own the parking lot just across the street from it as well?
I do. Well, just currently, recently. The Norton Family, or the Norton Family Trust owned it for several years, in which they had a Lamar sign on. That blew over in a heavy windstorm several years ago, so it was not renewed, obviously. And so, that income became, well, become non-existent, so they approached me. We had a lease agreement with them that we maintain that property. We keep it tidied, up to date, and so our construction team can day park there.
Okay, so that wouldn't be parking for your employees?
I employ 42, so that current lot is eaten up by construction, service, and maintenance crews. 30, well, 25 to 30 people in that, in those departments. The parking lot that's immediately around my physical plant is, like I said, 18 spots. We have 18 people that are in staff, in office.
That billboard at Kemper and Lyon, it's no longer there?
No, you see in my picture, it's gone. You would, it kind of, it'd be where that car and that center point kind of marker pole is. Yeah, it blew over.
On this map view, it's still there?
No, it blew over, I think, two and a half years ago in one of those heavy windstorms that came by. Actually landed on one of my guy's truck. I should have, while Lamar was here, I should have had them, see if I could fix that.
And, okay, as I'm facing your building...
Yes, sir.
To the right is what we're just talking about. Is the parking lot to the left, do you own that as well, that piece of property there?
Those are four shotgun home lots that, over the time, as people have passed or things have been evacuated, we have acquired those over the years. And, I mean, in our five-year plan, we have about 7,000 under-roof square feet. Our five-year plan is to expand another 3, 3,500 to 4,000 feet of retail office as we grow, as we hope to grow, to expand that in office space. So that's, right now, it's just an empty lot that we maintain with dirt, you know, it's just, it's there. It is not a parking, it's mud when it rains. We plan on expanding that that way.
Okay, now, since you brought that point up, that it's not concrete, or whatever has a surface on it, is the one that's to the other side where the billboard used to be, is it the same?
No, it's...
It's not developed?
No, it, no, well, it's not concreted, but it is gravel.
Okay.
It has been for perpetuity. I'm 39, it's been there since we moved there in 89.
Okay. Any more questions or concerns from the board? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking for case number 19-322-BAC?
Good afternoon. I'm James T. Rubin Jr. with James T. Rubin Real Estate at 7207 Lyon Avenue. We've been at that location, my family, since the late '60s. And we had a sign up in that property, and there's just so much foot traffic down Lyon Avenue going north and south, and my sign was knocked down, defaced or whatever, a number of times. south, and my sign was knocked down, defaced or whatever, a number of times. And at this point, I refused to put it back up, and it was probably six to ten feet tall. So with all that foot traffic that's coming down Lyon Avenue, vandalism occurs, and I think that would be one of the issues that Morehead Pools would face. And I'm sitting at my office all day long, and I see all the traffic that goes and comes, and people are walking with sticks, they would just knock the signs out, do whatever, so...and my opinion, after listening today, I think that would be some type of hardship on him if that sign was, because he would continually have to repair it for possible damages. Thank you very much.
A monument sign?
Yes, a monument sign. Mm-hmm. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number one-nine-dash-three-two-two-dash-BAC?
Good afternoon again. Don't worry, guys, it's the last time you're gonna have to hear me. Coming on behalf of Morehead Pools, Michael's a good friend. And the UDC, obviously, is the situation that's been taking place today, is what we passed, and I know we, as the elected officials, passed it, but we see that there's a lot of limitations, and we have to continue working on it. There's some changes that obviously need to be made. Current UDC, it's to discourage an excessive number of signs, which Mr. Michael has that taken care of, because it's the same exact sign. Matter of fact, he's doing us a favor by doing an even smaller sign, to encourage a visible, favorable environment, which he's doing a very, very nice sign, so I like that. And it's to promote and protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So obviously, that's been achieved right there. The approval of the variance requires a demonstration of hardship and a determination of no negative impact on the health, safety, and welfare of the immediate area. I know both gentlemen's that spoke before me, they addressed the hardship that needs to happen. As a business owner myself, I know taking out two parking spots would be very hard on my clientele and my customers. The current location that he has, it looks very good. I know you guys saw the pictures of what he's gonna make, and it's gonna impact with the pole sign just the same. That pole sign, I know, is the issue with the UDC and the changes, so I asked for the variance to just allow him to upgrade his current sign, make it smaller, and the hardship is obviously, like what the second gentleman said, if you put the monument sign, the vandalism that would come by on people walking by. One thing that they didn't point out, and I know I deal with this at my location where there is a monument sign, I can't see the street, and that's the issue. When we pull out, it's very dangerous, because when we look left in the oncoming traffic, the monument sign has made it hard to see. So that was one thing that I think by having the pole sign still there, making it look better, making it be smaller, would achieve the safety of the local area by allowing traffic that's leaving the retail store to still have access to see the visual of the oncoming traffic. So I ask you guys if you would do him this, to grant the variance on this one. Thank you, staff.
Thanks, sir. Anyone else speaking for case number one-nine-dash-three-two-two-dash-BAC? Anyone speaking against case number one-nine-dash-three-two-two-dash-BAC? And there are none?
I make a motion to approve the variance for the sign.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Dunn, second by Mr. Berry to approve the variance. And the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. Any old business at this time?
It really should be old business, and it was just overlooked, Mr. Chair. In October of each year, the chair should appoint a nominating committee in order to nominate officers for next year. But even though we are past the October deadline, we ask that you create a nominating committee a day of three members in order to make nominations for the next meeting for offices for 2020.
Yes, sir. And we will do that before we adjourn today. Okay. Any other old business? Any new business? We get Christmas dinner, sir?
He's happy today.
Just a question.
You will...I think that getting agendas mixed up, I don't know if there's a phase for the director's report. I had everything for that phase for you.
Okay. I'll make sure to give you that at time, sir.
Question.
Oh, yeah, we'll get to that, too. Okay, anything else that we need to review?
Okay, if you would allow me, the first thing is that there are no...there are no cases for the December meeting, so we will not have a meeting in December.
We're gonna defer.
The...now we have a slight situation. We scheduled the employee appreciation. We may just have to eat at that location and come to the meeting on December the eighteenth. We'll have to work out the logistics now that we did the feral. But the employee appreciation lunching will be at Country Tavern. That's at 823 Brook Hall Drive. We have it tentatively scheduled for twelve o'clock. We may can move it up to eleven o'clock in order to have lunch and come to the actual ZBA hearing. We'll be...Emla will be getting in touch with you if there are any changes to that, but that's what we have tentatively scheduled now. We are planning a MPC-ZBA retreat with staff for the tenth of January 2020. Tentatively, that's a Friday, we have reserved space at Samstown Resort and Casino. This should be about a three-hour meeting. We have tentatively scheduled Charles Marone with Strong Towns to come and talk about all kind of innovative things that are happening around the United States in reference to building better and more robust towns and cities, so I think it would be very beneficial to you. We had a very successful planning commissioner board adjustment training this past...two Saturdays ago. Thank everybody that participated. I hope that it was beneficial to you, and you got valuable information that you were able to use in this meeting and future meetings to come. Everyone that has not had ethics training, I remind you to...able to do ethics training online, I remind you that ethics training must be completed before December 31st, so I would ask you to, at your very earliest convenience, go through and do the ethics training. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right, anything from the board members?
Besides my birthday, sir, and I'm getting ready to go to the table.
Happy early birthday and enjoy your trip, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Okay, we need to...well, I need to actually appoint three members to come up with nominations for officers.
And they can bring that up.
Yeah, to the December eighteenth meeting.
December eighteenth.
Yeah, bring that. So I nominate Mr. Fred Moss. Mr. Farrell again. You okay with that, Mr. Farrell? Sure.
You got to initiate the new girl.
And Ms. Dunn. All right? Anybody got a problem with it?
I don't have a problem with it.
So you understand your job? All right. Nothing else, media adjourned.